All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Isani City Council to order if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. During roll call, all council members are present except for Councilman Lundin, who is out of state this evening. Do we have any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion? No changes at all?
So Mayor and Council, we did have some additions to the agenda earlier today. I'd like to just mention those.
Okay.
Under the Proclamations, Commendations, Certificate Awards, we have recognizing Councilmember Dan Colson for his years of service. And then, in the business items, we have Business K three was added today, resolution to call for a special election. And we have resolutions on that before you that will be discussing on that item.
Okay.
Motion to adopt the agenda with the changes.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to proclamations. We've got recognizing national pregnancy and infant loss remembrance day. And I'll just go ahead and read the proclamation here quickly. Whereas infants remembered in Silence Inc. and many other nonprofit organizations work with thousands of parents all over the state of Minnesota and across the United States who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy and through early childhood. And whereas many of these parents live in, deliver in, have a child die in, or bury a child in our community. And whereas infants remembered in Silence Inc., a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization was founded in 1987 to offer support for parents whose children or child has died from miscarriage, ectopic pregnancy, molar pregnancy, stillbirth, neonatal death, birth defects, sudden unexplained death of a child, sudden infant death syndrome, illness, accidents, and all other types of infants and early childhood death. Whereas bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually on October fifteenth with the candle lighting at 7:00 P.M. Families remember their children or child around the state and across the nation. This would unify these parents in tribute to their children. And whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City of Isani, Minnesota, in honor of the thousands of children that die each year in Minnesota. Infants remembered in Silence respectfully request that October fifteenth, 2023 be recognized as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. This resolution will be adopted today by the Isani City Council the third day of October 2023. That's a tough deal. If anyone is out there dealing with those type of issues, we want to make sure we're thinking of you, so. It's also Manufacturing Month, and I'll go ahead and read the proclamation for that. Whereas manufacturing is a dynamic and robust industry crucial to the health and strength of Minnesota's diverse economy. And whereas manufacturing represents the second largest contribution to the state's gross domestic product by any industry. And whereas manufactured exports bring in over $20 billion into the Minnesota economy. And whereas workers from Minnesota manufacturing take home the second largest total payroll among private sector industries. Whereas manufacturing in Minnesota pays an average annual wage that is 10% higher than the state's overall average private sector wage. And whereas more than 75,000 job openings for manufacturing positions are expected through 2030 in Minnesota as older workers retire. Now therefore, I, James Gordon, Mayor of the City of Isani, do hereby proclaim October 2023 shall be observed as Manufacturing Month. Appreciate everybody. We have a lot of manufacturing that goes on in town here and a lot of shops that are working on making all sorts of stuff. So appreciate all the hard work that they put in. Then we have our fifth annual MMBA Fire Department Supply Drive Check Presentation. Keith, you want to do the honors there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Got members of the Isani Fire District here to accept a check in the amount of $5,315.25. That was what was raised through the Fire Department Supply Drive that we did through the MMBA. The majority of that was with roundup donations made at the register. And I'd just like to point out that this donation is from all of the residents and customers of Isani Liquor. It's not necessarily from us. But, you know, we're the conduit to kind of get that to where it's needed and show our support to the different groups within the area, so.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, do you guys want to come up and it looks like we got a big check there and get a picture taken?
Whatever you guys want. Bill, you tell us where you want us.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, guys. That'll go toward a good cause, for sure. And then lastly, tonight, we want to recognize Councilmember Dan Collison for his years of service. For those of you that don't know, this will be his last meeting here this evening. And 2013 to 2023, 10 years of dedicated service. And just from my time getting to know Dan, I mean, he's got a good heart. And I think your motives have always been pure, and I think you've always stood up for what you believe in, and I have a lot of respect for you. And I wish Steve was here to echo some of that, but we sure appreciate all the work that you've put in. And the community appreciates it, so we wish you the best of luck in everything that you do going forward.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been, it's been an honor to serve the community and thank everybody for dealing with me for that long. City staff's been awesome to work with, the residents, Ms. Isani as well.
Absolutely. Did you want to get a picture with? Okay. All right, we will now move on to approving the city council meeting minutes. We've got the council budget work session from September nineteenth. We have the city council meeting from the nineteenth. We've got committee of the whole from the nineteenth. And we've got our special council meeting on the twenty-fifth. Any questions? Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve all four of those.
Motion to approve all four.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Collison and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. For announcements, we've got our committee of the whole meeting coming up on Tuesday, October seventeenth at 5:00 P.M. Planning Commission meeting will also be the seventeenth at 6:00 P.M. The city council will be at 7:00 P.M. on the seventeenth. And the Park and Rec Board meeting will be on October twenty-fourth at 6:00 P.M. Any council committee reports?
I do have one. So over the summer, I attended the League of Minnesota Cities Meeting Series. This is basically just a group of representatives from many of the cities in Minnesota. We recommend different bylaws and ordinance changes to state leadership. I think it's important that a smaller group like this can gather a balanced set of ideas and values for the residents of the state of Minnesota. There were a few issues that I was very vocal about for the residents of Isani. One of which was the per mile tax on vehicles that some down at the Capitol are wanting to impose. That simply doesn't work for our community, especially for those that have to travel to work. Another issue that was brought up was about open meeting laws. Some of the Minneapolis leadership wanted to have the ability to close any meeting to the public that they see fit. That was something that I was very vocal about because I think leadership in the cities is forgetting who they're representing and what they're in office to do. So you got to have those meetings open. I think it's really important that one of us continues to attend these meetings because we can be the voice for the more kind of suburban rural areas like Isani. A majority of the group down there is from more metropolitan cities. And I think if we don't continue to attend those, we're going to get drowned out by the policies that they want down in the city areas. So that's something I think has been very beneficial. I'm happy we added that this year. So I'd like to see that continue moving forward.
Sounds good. Any other council committee reports? All right, we'll move on to K one, resolution to consider approving the Fourth Amendment to the Development Agreement for Fairway Greens North Phase One.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you have a resolution approving the Fourth Amendment to the Development Agreement for Fairway Greens North Phase One, which impacts Block Three, lots one through 12, specifically relating to their garage size minimums. Currently, all of the garage size minimums are set for that development at 600 square feet except for the lots directly across the street from these lots, which are villa lots because they are 60 linear feet wide. So they're narrower than other lots within the development. So this doesn't really allow for the larger garage unless the garage is the only thing you see from the front yard. We did have the current builder and developer trying to work out other ways to change the layout of the homes to fit these 600 square foot garages, but it just wasn't working. And it just seemed logical to let them be reduced to the 400 square foot minimum that the other side has. And the planning commission did recommend approval for this on the September nineteenth meeting.
All right.
I have a question on this one. I wasn't here for that meeting. Is it normal to have a development make so many amendments throughout this process? Or is that something that, I mean, how much staff time does it take? Is that something that we can get reimbursed for?
We do still have a large amount of escrow, so if we are requiring recording fees or any attorney's fees, we do get, and engineering fees all get reimbursed through the escrow that is kept for the development.
Is it normal for that many amendments on a development like this?
This is a large development, so I can say that it can happen. Specifically, there's a lot of different lot sizes in this development. Everything's not the same. It's not a square field. So it does tend to happen when there are a lot of variations throughout the development process.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Collison. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to K two, the resolution to accept the resignation and declaring a vacancy on the city council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So before you, we have a resolution to declare the vacancy of Councilmember Dan Collison's seat. Following state law and also city code, which does prescribe for the outline of procedure on this, we do need to fill by interim appointment first, and then we will be calling for a special election, which we'll have on the next item. So for calling for an appointment, it'll be to accept applications for the candidate. This will be similar to what we did to Councilmember Heeman's position, actually identical, following the timelines prescribed by state law. We would accept applications starting tomorrow. They'll be posted and available on our website. They can also come to City Hall to get that. And they will be accepted until the end of the day on October twenty-fourth. We will have the tentative interview schedule posted by October twenty-seventh. The interview date and subsequent likely appointment, if council so chooses to choose someone, will be on October twenty, oh, I'm sorry, on November eighth, which is a regular city council. But because of an election on the seventh with the school board, our meeting moves to that Wednesday. So Wednesday, November eighth, is the regular city council meeting.
So I have a question on this one that kind of ties into K three a little bit. Is there any way that we can potentially maybe delay this so that we don't have to have a special election? So that we can actually have the election during the actual?
So we will, Councilmember Merrill, we will be having a special election. It still is called a special election, even if it follows and falls on the general election dates.
Okay, okay.
Because his term is open longer, more than two years.
So that won't really cost us a whole lot of money to have that included?
I have that on the next item for council discussion.
I just don't want, I mean, I didn't know if there was a?
This one doesn't impact what you choose for the special election dates. Just declaring the vacancy is what this is doing. And that until we do fill that by special election, we will do an interim appointment.
Okay. I just want to make sure we didn't vacate the seat if there was like, maybe if we could delay it for a week or something if we needed?
Oh, no.
Yeah, okay.
No.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to K three, the resolution to call for a special election.
So Mayor and Council, I do have Ms. Strand passing out. This is a section of our city code, Chapter eighteen, Section eight, C, and I circled B and E. So this is stating how we will do the special election, the timeframe that we will do. So state law states that we will, cities can hold it at the general election unless your city code states otherwise. Our city code does state otherwise in here, and I'll read it for everyone so you can hear what it states. In B, it states the special election will be held at the earliest deemed, excuse me, at the earliest date deemed reasonably practical by the city council. And then on E, it states the procedure at such election shall conform as nearly as possible to that prescribed for municipal elections. So I did seek the opinion of the city attorney. Because the word in B says earliest, it might be up to your discretion to determine is earliest just by timeline? Or is it earliest as practical because of budget constraints, staff, time availability? We did reach out to the election staff at Isani County. They do think that they'll be pretty pressed to do a special election that doesn't follow the general election because of staff constraints that they have. And with it being a presidential primary and presidential election, they will already be busier than a normal general election. So the choices that you have are those two resolutions before you, and here are the dates that it will follow. So if you do want to hold a special election as deemed earliest as possible, because we have a lot of different time constraints of certain days that we have to abide by, the earliest we could hold that special election would be May fourteenth. We do have to leave way for time for a primary because our city does have a primary if we get more than two candidates. So May fourteenth would be the earliest possible. And then, as you are aware, the general election would follow the November fifth. So I'm going to say it's up to council as city code states, as council deems it as practically or reasonably possible. Of which date you want to choose, the earliest, which would be May fourteenth. Or at the general, it should be November fifth, and this is 2024.
And the most important thing here, I think, to consider is the cost. Do you have the cost estimates of a special election if we were to hold in May? It's like 20,000 dollars.
I was not able to get costs confirmed from the county. Sometimes they help, and they do like the absentee voting, and then they just bill us for it. However, what they stated to me via email was that they aren't going to have the capacity to take it on and just bill us. We would have to take that on ourselves. And to my knowledge, we have not done that in our city, so I don't have anything to call upon. Best guesstimate would be possibly 20,000 to 30,000, but that is really just a guess.
I think it's most practical to have it at the general election. You'll have a better, you'll have way more people voting.
Yep.
I think it's, you know, if it did go into a primary, people are going to be trying to put out signs in the snow. Plus the savings cost.
Right.
I think it's, it's just the most practical way to do this is to have it during the general election.
And I will state, even though this does add six months, we are not by state law able to hold a general or a special election in the months of July and August. They do not allow that, so that does take some of those dates away. Just let you know, but.
Yeah, I think, I think waiting until the general election makes the most sense, for sure. I mean, for everything that you guys just mentioned, it just, I don't know why we would move it up any sooner, really.
It would give people some time to, to, if they chose to do it, it'll give them some time to prepare for campaigning or?
That's true, too, yeah, yeah.
Make that decision. And it'd be cheaper for the city.
And a better voter turnout. That's a big one, too.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so then, Council, I will go through the dates on the resolution to ensure that everyone's on the same page. So this would be the city council hereby would call for a special election to be held on Tuesday, November fifth, 2024. Even though this is at the general election time, it's still considered a special election at the general election. The canvas board meeting to declare the results of that special election is anticipated to be held on Tuesday, November twelfth, 2024. If a primary election is required, it would be held on Tuesday, August thirteenth, 2024. The canvas board meeting to declare the results of that primary election would be anticipated to be held on Thursday, August fifteenth. Notice shall be posted in the official city newspaper on Thursday, May ninth, 2024, and Thursday, May sixteenth, 2024. Filings of the affidavits for candidacy for that special election shall open on Tuesday, May twenty-first, and close on Tuesday, June fourth, at 5:00 P.M., 2024. The candidate elected at the special election with the highest number of votes shall take seat by oath of office after the canvas board meeting, which had been held following the number of days contesting the canvas board results, which is anticipated to be held on Tuesday, November nineteenth, 2024.
Those primary election dates, does that match up with what the primary will be for everything else as well, then?
Yes, they do. Or it does, one day, yeah.
Do you need a motion to go with that version?
Yes, I need a motion and a vote on that resolution.
I'll make a motion to go with the resolution that you just read for the special election during the regular election.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, moving on to K four, accepting the CSAH five intersection control final study and authorization to apply for LRIP grant funds.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jason's going to get set up. He's actually going to go through the presentation that WSB, who was a contracted engineer through the Isani County, presented to the Isani County Commissioner Board this morning. You did have your final report that you were able to review over the weekend and ask any questions that you had. Please feel free to ask those questions as well. What I'm looking for, well, first and foremost, I would like to say that the county commissioners were very eager to talk about this topic, which was exciting to see. I think everyone was happy to actually have some final hardcore data to be able to bull through and find out what is going to be the best solution for this main corridor of theirs and one of the busiest intersections that we have around. So what they discussed at the commissioners' board meeting was that they wanted input from the Isani City Council before they made their decision. It really did come, I believe, from a consensus of theirs down to a couple, two different options, which Jason will go through in depth tonight. And, but they, before making a decision, wanted to hear from our board to find out what direction we were leaning. We did have before them was an opportunity to apply for the LRIP grant, which is up to $1.5 million, which is huge for the project. And we would split that at the two-thirds, one-third, two-third being county percentage of the cost of the project, and one-third being the city. They did pass that resolution at the county board this morning because I do think that this is going to move forward. And once we get a recommendation from our city council of the option that you prefer, we will send that over to the commissioners. And this is back on their agenda at the next meeting, which is October seventeenth. And hopefully, we will be moving on from there very quickly. So we'll let Mr. Cook take it away.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So as Josie just said, this report was completed. I guess the city cost shared with paying for the report with the county, but the county led that, hiring WSB firm to do the traffic analysis and put this report together. So this is literally the report that they were just presenting to the county. So you see the same information. It's the same report, but I'll just kind of walk you through what was found. So this is just a figure of some of the traffic counts that were collected. I think the main thing to get out of this is that north leg on East Duel went from 1,250 vehicles in 2016 to 4,084 vehicles in 2022 after the QuickTrip went in. The rest are just how many vehicles made the turning movements in each direction at peak times that they collected. Otherwise, the other thing that they're pointing out here is how Credit Union Drive and East Duel Boulevard are reasonably close to each other. They're not a full block apart, which is an issue that had to be dealt with with this study. So this is the table of the crash rates that have been identified. You see the observed column is yellow. At the point six five and point five one at each of these two intersections we're talking about, the critical rate is below that, so that means we are in the, we're into the range where we want to address something before this gets worse. Now, in the future forecast, we're looking at a 20-year-out projection. They use a 10% growth rate for the region to come up with their numbers, which is looking at the year 2043, which is when we basically are hoping that the solution we come up with now is still going to apply then. You know, anything past that is kind of getting outside of the realm of standard, you know, traffic studies and improvements that we're trying to address because you just start losing track of what kind of traffic loads and what's all going to change between now and then. So they came up with five different alternatives. I just gave you the five different figures that they're made in the report. The first one, top down, is just a straight adding a signal to the current layout with just slight lane changes, but otherwise not modifying Credit Union Drive. Alternative two is the signal with rerouting Credit Union Drive. Three is two mini roundabouts at each of the intersections. Alternative four is a full roundabout with rerouting Credit Union Drive over to it. And alternative five is not rerouting Credit Union Drive, but turning it into a three-quarter intersection where they basically would be no left turn from the westbound traffic, but the northbound vehicles would still be able to make a left turn. That we'll see later isn't ideal.
I have a question quick. Is that okay?
Sure, yeah.
For alternative one, if you look at the diagram, so on the east side of the stoplight, it looks like there's a boulevard and it's only one lane going eastbound. Is that an issue with the print or is that how it actually be? Because it seems like that would be a big bottleneck issue.
Yep, nope, that is, that's how it's laid out. One lane heading eastbound from, you know, at the tracks continuing to the east. They've eliminated the two lanes all the way back there. Turns into that shared use lane for turning movements for both directions of vehicles to be able to turn into the side business entrances on the west side of the signal. And so when they only have one lane coming into the intersection and there's only one southbound left turn, there's, you know, no merging of vehicles there, so it wouldn't really bottleneck it there. It would have already happened when we had more lanes, you know, prior, but.
I mean, even right now, when people go to take a left into that, into QuickTrip, I mean, that's basically what you're having here already. I mean, even right now, when people go to take a left into that, into QuickTrip, I mean, that's basically what you're having here already in reality.
Yeah, they basically turn that into a, a turn lane, um, just to eliminate the, the two lanes coming into the intersection. Doing that also, if you look on the far east, the right side of this, the figure, they have that left turn lane going into Credit Union Drive. Um, they're able to create that lane by dropping off that two lanes going east, um, to have room for all that to fit. So, that's all, the geometrics are kind of set up for the signal.
I guess when I drive through there, not all the time is someone turning left on East Duel Boulevard when they're traveling eastbound, and I like that you can, you know, two people can go. I would rather not have that median there and have that, uh, that left turn lane be a left turn and a straight, kind of like, like how it's used now. I just, I think there's going to be a bottleneck issue there in the morning, especially when people are heading on Heritage Boulevard eastbound to hit sixty-five to go south for work. Um, a lot of people aren't going to be turning on the East Duel Boulevard, but a lot of people will be going eastbound towards sixty-five. Um, I just, if we have the space there, why not have it a lane? That's how I see it, and it's been a lane for years, and I think it works okay. That was, I don't know, it just seems like a waste of space to me.
Sure, um, you know, that, that like, uh, this is kind of those general, you know, schematics at stage of the process.
Okay.
When it comes to actual, uh, final design, you know, um, we'd certainly be able to get into the details
Okay.
of how we could geometrically make, you know, two lanes carry through if that was the preferred thing.
Okay.
You know, so at this point, it's more or less just how the vehicles are projected to be able to get through the intersection and whether there's, you know, some modifications to that.
Okay, thanks.
Is the land south of East Duel Boulevard for the extension of that road, is that off the table or is?
So, we've had a few conversations with that property owner and, uh, and they were looking for, you know, significant remodeling to their store to, to reface what's going to be the front. And, uh, and then the land acquisition process was just not sounding like it was going to be a cost-effective option for, for moving forward with it.
And that was years ago now that we had that conversation, but.
Technically, yeah, this has been underway for four years, so.
But, but nothing has changed there as far as we're aware of.
I mean, is there any sort of way we could package it to maybe appeal to that business more, other than the refacing their building that they had wanted, was that three or four years ago?
So Mayor Council, I have not had conversations with that property owner, um, with, within the last few years. I mean, I think that conversation, it could have been later in twenty nineteen, maybe even twenty twenty when we had conversations with them. I want to say it was twenty twenty, I'd have to look back to see for sure. Um, but at that time, it, it was financially not feasible, not even remotely, and I'm not sure what the, the value of that property, if it's gone up to them or if their mind has changed, I wouldn't be able to say.
Okay. I think before we recommended option, we might need to have that information. I mean, it's, uh, that would make a huge impact in what we end up doing. Um, I don't know if there's any way we can.
That also might be a future retail lot too.
Right, which will add more traffic.
Which would be a nice spot for more retail too.
It would.
If you put a road through there, that spot's gone.
Yeah, you're taking that away.
Right.
Or if the bank ever wanted to expand.
If, if we went with the stoplight option, I s- I see what the traffic is on this road. Would, we will be able to time this light with sixty-five on the left turn at, from the south at, in the afternoons, because I can see it backing up, backing up real close, and if this isn't timed with the light on sixty-five, we could have a problem in the future if we go with the light. With the car count a- at maximum, did they do a count during rush hour, dur- for that section, people turning off sixty-five?
Yeah, that's when they do the counts, is during peak, um, hour, uh, morning and evening. That's what some of these tables are here, the A M peak and P M peak. You know, are where they're tracking how it performs at those peaks. So, um, so yeah, otherwise, yeah, coordination with the signal timing would, would need to happen so that there's no, you know, doubling up of, of, uh, the first light changes and the other one's not going and they all stack up. So that would be coordinated, you know.
How do they do that with a state-controlled light versus a county-controlled light?
So.
They actually.
More on the communication end as opposed to electronics. Like if they're changing their program, then they have to communicate with the county to, uh, keep everybody doing it, but it's not a automatic system connection because they're separate entities.
What option do you recommend?
Well, I mean, I guess I was going to walk through all the alternatives here just to kind of go over it all, uh, but in the end, um, let's, let's just walk through them all and then we'll, we'll get to that. So, so on alternative one, um, we're exactly on the topic of the geometrics and kind of what's going on here. Um, I guess the only real critical point that comes out of this option is you see the one yellow, um, level of service being at a D. That's pretty, pretty terrible level of service. That's for the northbound people on Credit Union Drive. And, uh, and so that basically by twenty forty-three is not being addressed, and we got some bad traffic issues at that location. So, so that's, that's the specific bad, you know, across the threshold of it's not functioning adequately thing with this option. You know, if you see there's some Bs and Cs, um, in the, uh, A M peak, um, on both the, uh, East Duel Boulevard and Credit Union Drive intersections, but it's just, this one's more in that level of B to C, which, you know, obviously it's like grades in school, you know, an A and a B are everybody's happy with, you know, you start hitting a C and it's kind of, this isn't co- you know, working quite as great as we'd like, and you start getting below that and people are getting grumpy. So, so that's just the general system on this one.
Before he moves on to the next alternative, I would like to just share, looking through my emails and at, um, looking at the city council agenda on February second, twenty twenty-one, the city council did hold a closed session to discuss the purchase of that property itself from that property owner. Uh, they did not, looking at my emails, they did not give us a cost. They wanted the city to come up with the cost at that time, given the logistics of having to do some remodeling to the store, some refacing and turning of that, of their business. Um, to my knowledge, there was no offer made on that property from the city.
There was, I remember there was rough guesstimates, but they were, I, I want to say they were, were well over two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I think that was the low end, if I recall correctly.
Yeah.
I thought the total was around eight hundred or nine hundred thousand with the acquisition and the reface, I thought, but that was a while back.
Yeah, I can't, for sure.
Remember it being that much, but I think Dan, I think you're in the ballpark there. It was, it was pretty high.
Yeah, that, that number may be the
With the acquisition.
land acquisition, the, the building work and the actual road reroute, like chunk, you know? Um, I would have guessed is in the just shy of a million dollar range.
Okay.
Or, or was of an add to the project. So, so that's why, uh, you know, alternative two, which is, you know, in the report, isn't getting as much attention in this presentation here because that piece was found to be as expensive as, you know, more than half of the cost of any one of the other options. So, um.
But is it, I mean, is it really out of the question if it's, I mean, if you look at the, the difference between the roundabouts and this sin- three-legged stoplight, the difference in the flow is so much better. Um, is it, I mean, the price is relatively the same for a roundabout and an alternative two with even the acquisition of property. So I don't, I mean, is it really that much?
So the acquisition of property that's in there is not the numbers that we were
Okay.
given. That was if, well, more or less if we went the eminent domain route of forcing it through,
Okay.
it would be expected that that's kind of what the value of that property that we would have to buy is. That doesn't include legal fees, attorney fees and all that good stuff, but that is the, the eminent domain route, which technically exists, uh, which, you know, I guess at the time, again, at that council in twenty twenty-one was not interested in going that route, and, you know, there's certainly more to it.
We haven't even wanted to do it for sidewalks.
Right.
Right.
For a one-block sidewalk.
Correct.
So.
Whiskey Road, for example.
So, yeah, so in twenty twenty-one, that was the last time this report kind of was talked about. It was found that that's going to be off the table, and then in the last two years, it's just updated traffic counts and updating the report, but the report was basically made back then, and this is just finally getting the final, okay, now it's time to actually start trying to get after some, some grant money to make this actually happen.
Is there any, is there any way that we can direct you to maybe reach out to them again to see if it has changed or if there's any sort of option for that? Because I think if we're going to do it, we should do it right the first time. Um.
I, Councilman Merrill, I certainly can reach out. The only reason why time is of the essence and having this conversation now is to be able to make the recommendation because of this L R I P, uh, funding for the one point five million. If we weren't talking on trying to gain those funds, then we really don't have any time constraints on either end for the county or ourselves. But it really does have a finite deadline that we'd have to apply for, and the, the funds are higher than usual, that they're making available.
Jason, do you know if, say if we were to, uh, tentatively pick number one, do you know the difference in price between adding on that fourth leg versus the, just doing it at initial construction time? Is there a big difference or a big?
Right, so, so I, I was looking into that a little bit, so, so if you did the signal or the roundabout with just the three legs,
Mm-hmm.
um, to do that reroute of the road, the road cost itself in today's dollars would be about six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's not land acquisition, eminent domain, or whatever you all want to go. The other problem is if you don't do it with this project where we're trying to get grant funds, we're not going to have grant funds at that time. And not to go to the county side of things, but it'll also be exclusively city cost because it would be a city project reroute in the city street. So cost-wise, it'll cost the city significantly more to do it later than to do whatever we want to do now. Um, so.
Jason, I can't remember. I know we did discuss having the roundabout. We did have enough right-of-way to fit it in without touching that lift station because there's a lift station on that corner. I can't remember if we put in a leg, um, and that did go down. If we would have to move that, do you recall?
No, I believe we.
We could make it fit.
From my geometrics, the size are up, and it looks like they're under the same impression of not accounting for it on their cost, that I think it's able to stay there.
Okay.
You know, uh, it's drawn in on that alternative two and four, um, where it's positioned, you can see that southwest quadrant there, that little patch of pavement, that's our main lift station there, or, or, I don't know what her technical name is, Lift Station Three.
Subway Lift Station.
Yeah, that's what, I didn't know if I was, so, um.
I like, um, I like option three, but Luke, you were saying if you looked at option five, that has the potential for a future build still, but like anything longer you wait, the more it's going to cost.
So is there any way, is there any way to make this a two-lane roundabout? Cause I, I just, I just see.
Two-lane roundabout.
A two, no?
Yeah, so.
I mean, how many more feet would we have to have? That's, I, I just don't see a single lane roundabout really working like we want for a future growth of the city.
That was asked and discussed at the county board meeting this morning, um, and Jason can share his thoughts. WSB had shared that there wasn't, um, when they have looked in the state of Minnesota, when they oversized, or what, well, now it's considered oversizing the roundabout, they actually had more crash data than if they were single because of more cars funneling in and not knowing how to get out.
More crash data, but better flow.
And they've actually had them sized down, um, when they were overbuilt, when they come to find out, and he could not recall, and maybe Jason knows something different of where they've had a mini roundabout such as this situation, um, and made them bigger. He couldn't recall.
And, and we're kind of looking at two different kinds of roundabouts. The, the single roundabout would be more of a standard roundabout. The, the two are mini roundabouts where that's paved through the middle with a drivable over bowl curb.
Yep.
So that, you know, semis and things.
Tractor trailers.
Tail and trail over that and, and not constrict it and, and cause problems. Um, with that said, the, the, the mini ones, you can't really go to the two lanes at all because that exact topic, you're turning so tight, your tail end of the outer lane is going to completely take out the other one. So on the main, on the full one, you do need the larger diameter to have the two lanes actually be able to stay next to each other. And that, so not only a bigger diameter, but also another lane, and so it'd be a significant larger footprint at the intersection. And then I'm almost positive that our whole lift station would probably have to get shifted as well to, uh, to get all that in there. With that said, um, it really is being found that once you have the vehicles in a single lane and there's no stop condition, and they're just doing this fifteen mile an hour through that you feed cars through instead of having the stop-go wave of vehicles that you, where everybody's used to from coming off of the stoplight and everybody's in two lanes and they're all trying to, you know, get in front of each other by the time they get to one lane. Well, if we do that beforehand, you're already just feeding the one lane through, so it really can process vehicles fairly quickly, but, um, but I guess that's where these results are coming in. Um, so I guess it sounds like it's time to jump to at least our next one, alternative three. So this is with the single, with two of them, but they're the minis, and there's just the one lane of v- traffic. And if you see the table, it has a level of service of A on every single condition in every direction in twenty forty-three. So this one addresses literally both intersections, like almost to the overkill side of things through twenty twenty-four, twenty forty-three, sorry, not through next year. Um, so, you know, this one is the one that meets all the, the goals. If you're just looking at how a traffic evaluation is going to play out.
The only thing on that one that I, I like, I really like that one. The only part I don't like is that, that, that first turn in a QuickTrip, which is supposed to be for diesel only, but majority of people that turn in there are just turning in and parking their car in the parking lot.
Well, that's diesel only on that entrance?
Sign says diesel trucks entrance.
But plan review, it was, it was supposed to be one way, one vehicle in.
Right.
So it's supposed to be very restricted and skewed, and it's just not constructed that way, so there's people shooting across.
There's no turn lane there.
Right.
So.
It does say exit only, but nobody.
It says exit only, yeah.
But nobody acknowledges that, and it got, it's paved tw- two lanes wide, and it lines up enough for people to shoot across from Credit Union Drive. And it's not supposed to be, and it's not functioning right, and that's why we got both intersections in the study because those types of things are going on.
QuickTrip should have had to have put a right turn lane in right there.
So, you know, that was, I know back when they were doing their plan reviews, I was counting comments on how they were going to be restricted on that, and and that's what they got allowed to do. So
Yeah.
this will at least just act as another way out of the single lane of vehicles, so it's already at the speed of a turn lane.
Mm-hmm.
And now it's not going to cause restrictions and it's just going to be flowing. Um, I would say, I don't know how this is currently geometrically lined up, but since they have it shown as a driveway, I would, uh, I'd probably recommend that when, if we go to final design with this one, that we bottleneck that, and it is, it's truly an out only, just to not have extra, um, you know,
Enter only.
trying to come in there and then also, you know, at the next one, because that's what it was supposed to be all along, but same topic. It's kind of still in that, you know, concept phase at this point.
They, they did it that wide so semi trucks could pull in, I'm sure. Otherwise, if you have a, if you have a fifty-three foot trailer, you can't swing a turn in a single lane.
Back ends just going into the grass and
Yeah.
there's that gas station.
That's probably why they did that like that. I think, I mean, so, uh, does alternative three, does that leave you um, still being able to use that entrance into QuickTrip, I assume? Anybody can use it, okay, just making sure.
You know, and that's where I say it hasn't been detailed out whether or not it's, you know, going to be able to function as an out, but I'd recommend probably, you know, maybe, I'll look into it, but at least the, the out only, um, you know, exit only from the roundabout to, uh, to at least continue doing what it was supposed to be able to do, but not adding just more points of conflict.
Could we, could we ask QuickTrip to close off the parking lot between their car wash there and the, and the diesel drive so that way? I mean, if you're going to go all the way back around a building to leave, you're not, that doesn't make sense, but if you're parked on the southeast side of that lot, now there is a, you know, there is a desire to just quickly exit out of there, but if we ask QuickTrip to block that exit off of there from their parking lot, could we, is that something we could legally do? Or is that a?
Not, not, I mean, I guess we can.
Cause that would solve the problem, probably.
Yeah, I mean, once we're trying to address these intersections, we can find a solution. You know, if anything, maybe this just extends that leg to a more defined route. You know, if anything, maybe this just extends that leg to a more defined route where it isn't gonna be.
Okay.
You know, comfortable for somebody to try and head out it.
Sure, okay.
You know, kind of a thing, but you know, those are all that next level of, of evaluation. But, but considering the, the flow of inside their own parking lot, you know, functions and was approved and. Everything other than this people trying to go out, it works right. You know, I don't, I don't know that we'd have too much power or say to tell them to block off internally with.
Okay, there are other Quick Trips oriented like this with that blocked off. There's one in White Bear Lake like that kinda.
I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
I would lean on them, we can ask.
We could request it, maybe.
Okay, okay.
I'm looking at it the opposite. I, I think the first roundabout is more, it's more functional if we can actually widen that road going into Quick Trip.
Well, that.
The diesel exit and make it a two-way. Um, I can see way more people hitting that first exit on that roundabout than they will on the second.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's what they do now, but there's no turn lane.
If we could, yeah. Roads better be a more functional roundabout.
Sure.
And.
But they're not going to diesel pumps.
And actually widen, you know, talk to what, Quick Trip about widening this back lot.
Turning it into a two-way intentional.
Yes, actually turning it into a two-way, I think it would be.
Yeah.
A better way to go.
That's, that's probably true.
Yeah, I mean.
But it's, it's one way though behind there to the diesel pumps.
Yeah, but everybody comes in and goes left through that parking lot and parks.
Yep, they do.
And it's still wide enough to fit two through there plenty easily.
Yeah, if we can, if they would widen or even if we could widen that. The width of East Dul almost.
Technically, that's kinda what we actually are doing on our liquor store. You know, we kinda made it two-way and then you hit the backside and then we marked it off as, okay, now this is one way. You know, so it could be that same idea that.
And that would alleviate a lot of traffic from East Dul too in that funky three-way.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that, that's a better option in my eyes, but.
Either way, it'll flow better, cause you're not gonna be, you're already in the roundabout and if you're gonna make a right-hand turn there. It's just, everything's gonna be moving.
Yep.
And another benefit of that alternative is keeping that open thoroughfare from Credit Union Drive. So you'll see when he moves to alternative number five, where we just have the single roundabout option at East Dul. It doesn't allow for access going left-hand turns out of Credit Union Drive, which would force users to go, to go down and around and go out.
It's either black.
Dahlien even, which could create another issue at a different intersection. So that is the nice thing about this is, as we will continue to have growth and businesses and development down in that area, we still have vacant lots. I think it's important to make sure we keep that as flowing for traffic there.
No, I don't, I don't like, I've, I mean, I've used Credit Union, or Minco, uh, for basically my whole life. I do not like their entrance that close to five. Um, is that typical to have a entrance to the parking lot right off a roundabout like that? I, I've never liked that. And I know the people at the bank say they see accidents there all the time. Is there any way that we can ask them to maybe move their entrance? Um, to the south side or, I mean, I don't, I don't, I see that as being a, still an issue with that roundabout setup.
Yeah, so, you know, again, once you get into the actual final design geometrics, um, I would say for sure that would be a, you know, a one-way, you know, out option. It would just be, yeah, that is pretty tight to have an actual, not like, like sometimes if it's a residential driveway, those would be there. But it's just, you know, that one person going in.
Yeah.
On their rare occasion. Um, so yeah, sizing up whether or not that, somebody trying to exit right there is gonna.
That's an in right there.
Cause a problem, uh.
This is, this makes it further away though, this roundabout. It'll actually make the entrance further away from the actual road.
Yeah. Right now, it's, yeah.
Right now, it's, yeah.
Right, okay.
Really close, but this would make that, this would improve the distance.
That angle though is a pretty tough one, uh, you know, for, if you're coming around, the only way to go into it is you're going, coming around it and you're heading straight south and you gotta hang that. You know, more than ninety-degree turn there, so I could see why shifting something about that would, um, would probably be needed.
Okay. How about, so if you take, say we take Heritage, we're going westbound, then you get, uh, take a left on a Credit Union Drive. Um, do you see any problem with so much traffic with all the development that we're gonna have over here that we'd need to add another roundabout to Credit Union Drive and Cherrywood Street? Um, because there is a stop sign there. And if you're, right now, if you look at the numbers for the traffic, uh, there's a car every two point four seconds is what the math comes out to. Um, now that's total both directions, so I don't know, are we gonna have an issue with people stopping at Credit Union Drive and Cherrywood? To turn left or right and getting back up onto Heritage, which is then only a one lane? So then you have a, like a, a bottleneck there. I'm not sure if that is a potential issue or something that was thought about. Cause this is gonna be developed a lot more in this Cherrywood and, between Cherrywood and Maine.
Um, so, I mean, looking at the counts they collected, it doesn't show up as, you know, a problem at all.
Okay.
Um, like you say, if development grows, um, you know, if anything, I would see that as. That's a long ways for that backup to have happened for what we currently see or what I would foresee.
Okay.
If it just goes gamebusters over that direction, you know, maybe we'd switch it to a, actually, right now, is it, it's not a stop condition going south, is it?
Three-way stop.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Is it three-way? So what I was thinking is probably that first step would be to remove the southbound stop.
Okay. Sure.
You know, that'd just be if it got to stacking all the way back.
Traffic doesn't stop then.
But, yeah, so they can just flow out, but that would, by the numbers, that would be quite a, quite a ways out and quite a significant different scenario than what we're seeing right now.
Okay.
Right, so I guess we can move on to that, uh, fifth one then. Um, so this one tries to address somewhat of Credit Union Drive currently. And to get it to last a little longer before it goes to those, you know, levels of service that are gonna be problematic. Um, this has it, like we were just talking, um, more defined, one-way into Quick Trip. And, um, and a fully blocked with a median, so cars can't try and do the shoot across, um, as well. However, uh, you know, straight to Quick Trip, they did add a gap in that median for a vehicle to try and still hang a left. Currently, technically, the traffic counts, you know, make that viable. Personally, that's not wide enough for a car to sit in. And so the second somebody's gonna go and they realize that that car was coming and they had to go all the way across that and now they didn't make it. They're parked sideways and I, I have a hard time thinking that that's gonna be a good idea.
That's the whole, the, that's the only.
Why there's a median?
That's the only problem with that intersection now.
Right.
Is you can't turn left either.
Right, and now this is almost inviting somebody to get halfway across.
Yeah, sit there.
And then decide to sit, and that makes me pretty nervous. Um, so I could see it, you know, right now, maybe it works, but by twenty forty-three, you know, I think this still reads, yeah, this reads out with an F.
It's not an improvement though on what's already there.
Absolutely not, if not making it a little more hazardous.
Yeah.
So that, you know, it's just attempting to address stopping cars from doing what they're not supposed to be doing is more or less what I think that's doing. It is set up though with that full roundabout and the possibility of adding the, the reroute, which like we're saying, and I was trying to describe. That gets to a level service F. You see that bottom right area there and, um, and the north, or the northbound left, sorry, is an E. Oh, no, that's AM and PM. So it's an E and an F, AM and PM. So basically it's completely not functional. And so by twenty forty-three, we've basically made it worse and we, we're going to have to do something else. And so if we set up the, the full roundabout, well, now it's not gonna geometrically work with the mini getting added afterwards and that'll be more expensive. And if we set this up and we have to do that road reroute, like we were just talking, we, just like the signal. It's now more expensive in city cost to, to reroute that road and figure out how we're gonna get the land acquired to, to do it. Um, so it's kinda just, if, if at all, pushing it down the road for the next one, but, you know. It's a combined kind of a, I guess, attempt at doing something, so. Uh, so those are the, the three different scenarios excluding the road reroutes. Um, so project costs came in, uh, according to the report at that signal, the three-legged signal without rerouting that road at one point eight. Like we talked, it's vaguely in the six hundred thousand to million dollar range to deal with getting that land and reroute that road. And so I, you know, we're kinda talking like, if you wanted to do alternative two as a second phase in fifteen years. You'll end up spending somewhere in that one point eight million in today's dollars, you know, who knows about inflation. Um, alternative three, the double mini comes out at two point four, but there's no future work to do. And it's a level service A all the way through as far as they're projecting. And alternative five is two point two million, but, you know, kinda like we were talking. You're still gonna end up having to do that reroute reroute or a complete redo by twenty forty-three, if not earlier. And so you could be looking at adding a million on top of that. So, once you kinda factor that in, you started with what am I kinda recommending? It's a different thing, this double mini roundabout, by, but by the results of this report, it kinda stands out as. It addresses everything for as far as we're seeing. And while it's not the cheapest one in the actual cost of the project right now, it, it looks like it'll be the cheapest by twenty forty-three. And that's, as I guess you see in the slides, they, uh, that's also what, you know, WSB was recommending by the end of their report as well. That that met all their criteria. Um, so with getting into the dollars. Um, the LRIP grant money, um, can only apply towards the construction cost and it is capped at one point five million. Um, so, so the, the, you know, they got the whole cost estimates in the back and so you can see the cut, the, the construction costs. And like, if we're talking that alternative three, you know, the construction cost is at one point eight million. And so we could be looking at trying to get one point five of one point three million covered by writing this, this, uh, application at least. Um, the county, as Josie said, has already agreed to pay the two-third, one-third ratio of writing this grant. And so, um, it's a seven thousand dollar application. Um, and so we'd be looking at the city cost only having to pay, I can't think of the number, it's on the sheet, I think. Something like two thousand dollars. I should be able to do math. Um, and, and so this process is, it's already open, it's been open for a few weeks. Um, that's why we're trying to get this at least moving. Um, the application's due by basically the first of December, somewhere in there. Uh, and then we find out in March if we got it, more or less. So that's why we wanna at least, if we have a preferred option with you guys. Um, it sounds like we would just wanna be able to bring that to the county to understand what the city would like or would prefer and see where that goes.
Well, we, whatever option, we, we have to pick an option where they can turn left and right on Credit Union Drive. We can't block that off.
There you.
I mean, it.
The, with the roundabout, they can just go around.
Right.
Yeah, and.
But there was an option here that they can take a left-hand turn on a credit union. Well, if they wanted to go to the bank, they would have to go where to turn around.
Yeah, they'd have to go, they'd have to go back down to Maine and over and then choose to come up Dahlien or come up Maine or, you know, first.
Well, if we went with the stop. With the stop sign.
It, it's quite a, quite a detour, um, for them. And that would be the, you know, the drive for that reroute road topic, you know, if we're talking, you know, alternatives. Um, well, it's only really shown as completely blocked on alternatives two and four. Cause if the road got rerouted, we would completely block that off.
Right.
I mean, that's what that would do. But alternative five is the only one that's making an attempt at saying they're still allowed to take a left, but it's not gonna be too functional. So it's really the only option looking at this.
Yeah.
And it leaves out, you know. There's not another option that, that makes sense.
I, which one are you saying, George? Is the only?
Number three, uh, it's, everything flows nice. You got, you can get in and out of anywhere.
I only have one concern with that.
Emergency vehicles will be able to get through there easily.
Which option?
Three.
Yes, I agree. I think option three is the only option.
Um, and it leaves future retail land available.
Yeah, that's the last piece, yeah.
Is there any way that we can figure out how much a potential backup would be towards, um, the west, towards railroad avenue and the railroad tracks? Because you have a two-lane going into a one, um, right there, is that? It's a two-lane going into one, so is it potential that there's gonna be a backup back to the railroad tracks or back to railroad? I mean, I don't wanna just push the problem further down. Um, and then same with sixty-five coming two lanes into one. I mean, is there any way that we can measure how far back that the traffic could get backed up in peak times? Is that? I didn't see that in the report, cause it's outside of our little zone here, but you do have to think about.
Yeah, those queue lengths can be calculated from traffic loads.
Okay.
Um, I mean, that's kinda how they come up with how long to make a turn lane and things. That's how they figure that kinda thing out, so.
Okay.
Um, you know, well, I'm, you know, I don't hold the data, cause WSB did the study.
Right.
You know, it should be something they could get out of it, but that was something they stated on that backup to, to sixty-five. They have a little statement that says they did evaluate it and they don't believe it's gonna back up to that.
Yep, but railroad's closer.
Um, right, that's closer, but the actual next intersection. Well, I guess that, uh, yeah, we got Dahlien in there. I was just picturing, um, you know, the actual location that we go to one lane would be the other thing to. Finish, you know, designing in that final geometrics. Um, you basically want a few hundred feet of controlled, single-lane median to like. Can, like, make a vehicle coming into a roundabout feel constricted and kinda reorient them, so they feel like. Oh, I better slow down, this is tight and I'm getting kinda redirected here to get them to go to fifteen miles an hour. You know, or ten or whatever we're shooting for and whatever we end up with, but, so you need a little distance to have the one lane. Feeling like they gotta get themselves going, ready to yield to the, to the roundabout. Um, so once that's happened, then it would just be, you know, how quick do we wanna knock out the other lane before that? And, you know, it really wouldn't be necessary. We could do it as late as, as we want really, as long as it's past the beginning of this median where we're trying to do this.
Okay.
And if anything, that merge point will still be exactly what we're trying to get them to do. Get that speed to the ten to fifteen miles an hour. So we actually want it to happen and not get sped back up and then slow back down, so.
Okay.
It's kinda doing it reasonably close will be, you know, good, or, you know, functional. You know, they're showing the lane drops on the, the east side there for five hundred feet. That's that speed to one taper situation probably. Um, where we're trying to have everybody driving slower than that anyway. But if you just factor that in, you know, that would be, if you flipped it, would be the same idea that, that is taking you to starting to drop that, you know, somewhere around the tracks. But right now, the way the, the lanes drop westbound going to the tracks is as difficult as any lane drop there is.
Yeah, it is.
Neither has the lead.
Right.
And so if anything, we would drop one lane the way, you know, is standard and it'll work better than the westbound does.
Now, the only, the only thing we haven't talked about now is pedestrians. I know that is a huge concern. Um, I know a business owner that owns a building over there that his son almost got, uh, hit trying to, uh, cross Heritage there. Now, is there a way that we can incorporate a passenger, uh, uh, a pedestrian bridge or anything into this grant to hopefully add it to the, to the scope things? Cause I know roundabouts don't really work good for crosswalks unless.
No, they, they do.
They do?
Yeah, so, so right now, people have to cross four lanes of road in one crossing.
Right.
This, you have to cross fourteen feet.
Okay.
And you have the cars going fifteen miles an hour yielding. And so we're pretty much getting them as close to a stop condition where the person's gonna cross. And then that person only has to make it to the median each crossing. So they can be looking and being like, okay, all I gotta do is go from here to.
Okay.
You away, you know, that's all they gotta cross at a time. And so the pedestrian has a lot more, you know, I'm not starting now and I gotta worry about a car that's four lanes over, am I gonna beat them? And are they gonna see me? This is pretty much a lot more personalized.
Okay.
On, on trying to get across one of these.
There won't be hidden by another lane of traffic.
And you're out standing there, you're right next to the car instead of, you know, just strolling across and there's two lanes of cars and you can't, the second car can't see the person, cause it's hidden. You, you've eliminated, you know, all of that.
I thought during the, the twenty twenty meeting, I thought that it was talked about that there was actually less safe for, for pedestrians. That's why I brought it up.
I think that was a concern of people who were supporting the signal.
Okay.
Is that they thought it would be less, but not, that's not founded. I think that they have that feeling. Um, the other thing I would say is, I think what'll make this even better for pedestrians, um, which anything is better than nothing. But making this a good option is you don't have people taking those turns risky, not paying attention to pedestrians, because there's, this is so controlled of a slower movement. That I think then they don't have to be watching for the other car to cut off or do I, do I risk this and not looking for people.
It, and, and not to say that the signal's not good. I mean, the signal being, you know, you hit the push button, it gives the person the amount of time to cross. And so they have to go the full four lanes. And, so they have to go the full four lanes, but they at least have the complete control. So, it's, you know, it's not specifically saying the roundabout's like massively better, but it's a totally different way to deal with pedestrian crossings. And, you know, like I say, when you look at how short those little black crosswalk blocks are, that's all they gotta do at a time. And, and it's just that much easier to kinda restrict, um, those kinda accidents. And it's a much slower issue.
Sure.
The, the city's taking a lead on this project then, or?
So, at this point, there isn't a lead yet. It's just, right now, we're planning to write this grant, this grant application.
So.
I ha- I will say though, Councilmember Hema, I will say that I did kind of throw that out there though, um, to the, to the engineer and that, I'm talking with Jason, that it would be, if it's conducive to what the county has in line is taking a lead on it to ensure that, I mean, we like control, right? Everybody likes control. I love control, but, I'm sorry.
Well, my concern was is if we wanted to tweak a few things, if, 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 if it's a total county project, how do we go, go about it? Like, I mentioned about the roundabout at the first entrance and the quick trip.
Right, and dropping the lanes and things on the county road.
Right, in the meantime, I realize we just wanna come up with a plan, present it, get a grant, but obviously, whatever we choose, there's gonna be some modifications to it, I can tell right now.
Right, so, either way, we'll be in heavy contact with the county or the city, you know, whoever's leading, because exactly that. We need, from the city's perspective, to make sure all the city legs of the road are doing what we want our residents, businesses to, to get out of it. The county, you know, has to make sure their through vehicles are still getting their lane tapers and everything to be exactly what they want.
Okay.
And so, it's a, it's a merge and that's why it's a cost share and that's why it'll be, either way, it'll be a lot of, you know, teamwork on figuring out what's gonna make everybody happy, at least from the, you know, the county and the city's, you know, engineering perspective.
What, let's say the county takes the lead, what, what process would be involved to make a change or modification that the city wants? Would it be staff talking to the county? Because the county board members themselves would okay any changes or approve anything, so.
We don't wanna slow down.
Would we reach out to our, would we reach out to representatives ourselves, or? At that point, when it came down, if they were doing a vote?
So, usually, I mean, so usually, like I say, that, like, communication going on, um, you know, during the design, we would have to admittedly be trying to get ourselves into more meetings and get, more engaged, you know, and kinda keep actively keeping ourselves engaged, because you're right, it, you know, it could become, okay, they make the plans and then we say, no, no, we want this, and then we're just barely getting some tweaks. If we're actively being engaged, actively, you know, attending meetings, you know, there'll be the communication to get it to work out, but admittedly, if we were leading it.
I would rather we lead it.
The one thing I'd like to add to that is, I think.
County will still step in even if we're leading.
Yeah, right.
Oh, right.
This is county road.
It is.
We don't want that.
So, that lane drops down.
So, it really, both parties have to stay engaged.
I'm just worried that the ball's gonna get dropped somewhere.
I do think that the county is very willing to be open to the city of Iscany. I think what gives me a little concern, um, is the timeliness. I mean, look at how long the report took to get done. I know that there was some changeover and not to the fault of any of the, all the commissioners. Um, but it really did seem to be not, time is of the essence to just kinda move at a normal click, right? Um, so when we look at if we do get this funding for this LRIP grant, we have a timeline, we have sort of say a deadline. And I would not like to see things that, in between processes of communication, which I know the county and the engineer of the county are very open to, we're now making decisions we can't get because we're pushing against that timeline, like, so I think that is one thing where it's to just make sure that, we're hitting certain milestone markers of keeping on track, so everyone is able to be engaged.
Sounds, sounds good. I, i- is this something that, okay, let's say we go with nu- number three. Is it something we should maybe talk about at COW and, and maybe see if there's any more changes, discussions that we need to have on any of these intersections? Or just go with it and wait until, to see if we get the funding and then go from there?
Well, the reason why I'm asking the council to vote to make a decision for recommending to the commissioner board of what they want for their chosen preferred layout, is so we can keep moving on pace to be able to apply for the LRIP grant. Um, if they don't, I, I don't wanna speak for the commissioners, but I do feel from what I heard earlier today, that if they don't have a recommendation from our city council, they're not gonna be able to take their next step, which would be at the seventeenth meeting in the morning of what they want to recommend for a layout, so then it can come back to us and we can approve the grant to apply for. We're gonna hit against a deadline if we wanna go for those grant funding.
How long is the grant funding good for?
Uh, we'd have to extend them by twenty twenty-six for the project to be built by.
If we were awarded it, would there be any potential way to get, do it next summer, realistically?
So, because we need land acquisition and we have to follow kind of the process to make sure we get that land in the right way, it's likely not realistic to think it's gonna be done by the end of next year. Um, whether or not, you know, it may be possible to have started it by the end of next year and it may actually need to have started to be able to have it all get done by the end of twenty twenty-six, but, this LRIP grant, we don't find out till maybe the end of March.
Right.
And so, we can have preemptively decided to design and complete the plans, and be ready, and then the second we get that grant money, we make sure we've dotted all our I's and met all the criteria and get it submitted, but, you're still not looking at being able to bid till late bidding season.
Okay.
And then now, you're hoping to get somebody that can get after it in the fall.
Okay. Is there been any, I mean, is there a, like the devil's advocate side, is there a way, or what are we gonna do if we don't get the grant? Is this something that the county would still wanna go forward with? Because this is a huge problem for the city of Iscany. Is that's, is there been any discussion on that? I mean, you, I would, I don't wanna keep pushing this back and back and back and back. I mean, this could go on another twenty years, the way it's been going, and I'm, it's really frustrating.
So, previous to the discussion of with this grant and this additional potential great funding source, it, it was on their radar. They do know something needs to be done. I just don't think we were up against a timeline for it. Um, the county engineer had shared that it was in one of our, one of their plans, um, to possibly be looked at to be built in maybe twenty twenty-eight. And I think I had shared that with our council before, as we're looking at their corridor plans of their, um, their infrastructure plans that they have for transportation. Other than that, I'm not sure, because that report just got brought to the commissioning board at the same time, we're like, ah, this grant needs to be applied for now if we want it. I don't think that they had just, the opportunity to have discussions on what if we don't get funding yet.
Okay.
And, and from the city's perspective, you know, we were looking at it as we would use state aid funds to cover our third. And so, you know, that would be our contingency plan. Um, there's also, um, a couple other grant possibilities that we could go after. It's just they also would be going after the same only construction cost, so, so we don't really need to go after multiple ones, you know, um, at the same time, cause if we get one, we won't want the other one. Um, and so, so there's.
And the county's ha- has earmarked ARPA funds for some of their portion, so they do have some funds set aside for it, not the entire, two-thirds of the project with these costs, but they do have some funds allocated.
So, I have another question. Why are we paying for one-third of it if it's the county road?
We're the ones that wanted it. That's our, our leg of it, yeah.
We brought it forward.
Okay.
It, it's common to divide it by the legs of the intersection, so.
Okay.
So, you know, if you're just, where's just the obvious, the, you know, like the signal is the most straightforward, obvious, uh, oh, it turned off on me. Okay, we got.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
That has been the prac- typical practice and kinda the understanding of both the county and the city.
Okay.
From the beginning.
Cause we don't, we don't get any county tax funding to pay for this road. So, I mean, the county people use it and the city people use it, so why does the city have to flip a third, even though the county gets the city's, city taxpayers' money? Why? I, I don't understand.
You know, I did look into that, Councilmember Merrill, with the question you asked before a while back about if we did take that road over, we still wouldn't get the fund, the taxpayer portion of that.
Okay.
So, I have a, a thought on this and, and it's more so that I think, last time we had this discussion, I had a lot of people, cause I, I thought the roundabouts made a whole lot of sense and I, I think from just a strictly, you know, by the numbers and by the statistics and, you know, I think they, they make a lot of sense. Uh, and I like that they're not built up, that they're shorter. I mean, you go through Saint Francis and these things are, you know, massive and that you can't see anything around you and it just kinda feels like you're, you know, you're not even in the city anymore. It's just kinda, it just kinda ruins it. Uh, I don't think these would do that, you know? I think that, that it's nice to have them be smaller like that. But, something I wan- wanted to at least mention and make mention of was I had a ton of people say, I hate roundabouts. So, so just, just to ask the question, I mean.
Out of four thousand cars, how many gonna like it and how many are?
I'm just asking, I'm just bringing it up, cause I, I had so many people say, I just hate them.
I think in the last three years or so, that is, I mean, people are getting more accustomed to roundabouts. I think if you went and asked now, I think people, less people would be against them. I think it's becoming more of the, the norm. I mean, you go through any major city now and they got them.
I mean, I personally love them.
I love them too, you never stop.
They make so much more sense, but, and you never stop, right? But, there was the, the, the pedestrian issue was one that was brought up.
Right.
Um, and, just to ask the question here, I mean, if we were to look at option one, is there any way to improve that left turn ability out of credit union drive? I mean, can we make that median a little smaller, or, I mean, it, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, I guess that's, I mean, that's literally what. That's what they're attempting here. I mean, just picture that with the.
Well, I was talking about, uh, uh, alternative one, sorry.
Right, right. I'm just saying.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, they're attempting to do that there already.
That's what they're attempting to do at credit union drive.
Yeah.
And then just, yeah, switch that roundabout.
I mean, you just can't get a little farther to the west.
Mister Mayor, can I just speak to the dislike of roundabouts, just from experience in other cities? Princeton, their first roundabout, it was a huge reaction from the city, the residents, and, um, now I believe they have, four roundabouts, and by the fourth one, everybody was happy it was coming. So, I think it's just something that people do get used to and initially it is different and, um, but it has saved many lives in Princeton, so it's appreciated.
Councilmember Merrill, I think is right on top of it. In the last ten years, it's taken off like crazy, where ten years ago, yeah, most people you talk to, oh, roundabout, that's a roundabout. Now, you drive almost anywhere.
Which way do I go?
You'll have gone through one or two, and they're just second nature now. Um, and now all these minis are kinda actually becoming a little more popular. Like, everybody's going full roundabouts where they're intentionally building up the dirt so you couldn't see, and now it's supposed to help delineate, you know, vehicles to stay in the roundabout and not get just, and now they're finding, it's not nee- it's not needed. And it's just, these minis give the vehicles enough room to do what they gotta do. And the, um, you know, larger vehicles, the ability to get through it without, you know, blocking off somebody or traveling into the other lane.
Yep.
And, uh, and, like you're saying, it's just becoming more of the norm.
So, would this, would this center section, the islands, they'd basically be like a, like a four inch or six inch slat and then a, like a tar in the center type deal? Concrete? Oh, be all concrete? Okay.
In, in, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I love driving, I, I haul a big trailer all the time and I love those for that, it's, it's so nice.
I just finished, I've literally just finished one on Saint Michael. This, this pretty much is exact many roundabouts.
The thing about it too is the stoplight, as, as much as I know that people are not happy about roundabouts and it, but I mean, th- there's a lot of, like you said, I mean, there's, that was three years ago and there's been three more years of people having more experience and driving through them, but, I mean, it just, it, it solves the problem for a lot longer period of time than the stoplight does and it's, I just think it, unless I hate to, to do it, I think it makes more sense. And I always, I always have thought it made more sense. I mean, for a long time, we had the issue of, you know, are we gonna be able to have room for it? You know, was one thing we had to consider, but.
And we are gonna have to do some right, right away acquisition and easement acquisition, but all of them need something, and so.
You got a question about. Oh, you're coming on the other side. So, when you do a roundabout from highway sixty-five and you wanna turn onto credit union, there's an island there. And you wanna turn on the credit union. So, you're coming from sixty-five, yes?
You're going this way?
Yeah.
You go around?
You're going around this way.
So, you'd come in the opposite way.
Yeah, yeah.
That's how roundabouts work.
It's cause it's upside down, it messes up your, if you turn it, if you turn it this way, it makes more sense.
Oh, geez. Makes way more sense, I guess, that way.
Uh, what did the county say? I wanna, let's get the answer to that. What were their thoughts?
It sounds like they're mostly down to that alternative one or three and, uh, and they more or less wanted to hear what the city preferred. And then they were hopefully gonna take it to their next call meeting, but.
Yep, it'll be at their next, uh, commissioner board meeting on October seventeenth, which is the same day as ours.
I think, I think number one's a Band-Aid, personally.
Yeah, I mean, it.
It, I don't, I think it's still just as dangerous, if not more dangerous. I've always thought if there's a stoplight there, that's gonna be really horrible for credit union drive, just with car backups and, I never, I was never in favor of the stoplight, even, even as just a citizen in town, I always thought it was silly. But, I'm, I mean, I would like to see number three with the ability for us to tweak it or sort of take over the project, because I don't want, this to get drug out any longer than it has to. Um, it's not like a diss against the county, but it, I like our sta- I, I approve of.
No, there's nothing against it. I was really joking if anybody re- recorded what I said. We know, right? So, I, I, what I'm looking for, for council now is if we could get a motion, a second and a vote on your recommendation, um, that I will bring forward. I'll write up a letter, uh, to, to the county board, so they're informed. But, I would also like to continue the discussion. If there is, not that I need a recommendation or a motion on it, but if it is something that I can share with the commissioner board, that we are willing to take on the lead of the project, um, if that does help even alleviate them. I know that they have lots of constraints and, um, things as well. So, if that's helpful to them and we have the capacity, I'd like to know if that's the direction of council too.
I would make a motion to go with number three. I think it, it addresses every problem that we have and I think it's the best long-term solution.
A second. With, uh.
Yep, exactly.
The city, uh.
Yep.
Taken, asking them to take the lead.
Jimmy, you have any further thoughts on that?
Uh, I just, I just really don't, I just really don't wanna do the roundabouts, but I just, I mean, I'm really, I just really wish the stoplight would work, uh, but I just don't think it makes enough sense to do it. And, a- as bad as I really want to just do a stoplight, um, I just don't think I can make the argument against the roundabouts, so. Yeah, uh, so I have a motion from, uh, Councilman Merrill to go with alternative three. And I have a, a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Uh, thank you. And Mayor and Council, I'd like to ask for a motion to postpone the resolution authorizing the city to apply for the LRIP grant and to postpone it to the October seventeenth meeting. That'll give the commissioning board opportunity to also to choose, um, which alternative they want to go in, go with, so then I can fill this in at our council meeting and then we will be applying for that grant.
Does that give you enough time to do what you need?
Yes, that would be the last date that I can push it to, but yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to do that.
Postpone the LRIP grant application to the October seventeenth city council meeting.
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Collison to postpone the grant application till the October seventeenth meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Uh, let's see, moving on to K five, the resolution to accept plans and specifications and authorizing advertisement for bid for the Bluebird Park restroom improvements.
Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, tonight before you, you will see those plans and specifications, um, or the bid to go out for, the bid package for awarding, um, potentially to the bid plans and specifications for the bathrooms for Bluebird Park, sorry. It is part of the Bluebird Park splash pad and bathroom project as requested by council to, um, go out for specifications from an architect or engineer, um, to provide, um, specifications to award to a general contractor, um, in hopes that we will come in with lower bids than what we've received for the kits. Um, and so, this is what has been put together by the city engineer, um, as well as the architect.
So, I, I have a question on this. What was budgeted for, for this, this section of this project? I know the lowest bid is two thirteen, but, um, was it the two hundred ten thousand? I know the lowest bid is two thirteen, but, um, was it the two hundred ten thousand dollar, uh, engineer's estimate what was budgeted? So we're gonna be.
Luke, we're on, we're on K five there. So there was no, we're going out for bids right now.
Yep. We're on K four, sorry.
Got it.
Well, no.
So this is just for the, the restrooms, um?
Not the infrastructure part of the restrooms, that's the second one that we're accepting bid. This is to go out to build, for the build of the bathrooms, um, and, um, just to hire a general contractor, instead of, um, purchasing the.
Didn't we already do that?
No, I'm sorry.
We're on K five, but, but it's, we're, we're, we're authorizing that we're gonna go out for bids for the restroom. We, we, before we did the plans, is what we had authorized, that they would go out for plans. And now that we've got the plans, we've got the bid documents, now all this is gonna do is say we're gonna go out for bids.
And due to the cost of the total project amount of being possibly over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is the bid requirement, we decided it was best to go out for bid, because we're on that line. So we have to make a formal motion.
Okay, and this is still park dedication funds, as far as I understand it, right? Was where the, the cost is being covered for this stuff?
Um, it's coming out of the park dedication, as well as the outdoor recreation grant.
Right, yeah.
With the remainder of the project. This also excludes, um, plumbing, um, fixtures and labor, which, um, was a request of Councilman Lundin.
Because I know that Steve had mentioned that he would possibly be able to get donations for those, and he would.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
So I had a, I had a little bit of a question, going back to the last meeting, I wasn't here, but you guys had said that park dedication funds can be used for replacement of old equipment. Now, when we voted to approve the splash pad, um, I've always been against it, but when we voted on that, the, the understanding was that park dedication funds could only be used for new parks. Um, so now we're saying that's not how it is?
We do need to change that zoning.
Add-on to the park.
It is still in our zoning code, that it is only allowed for new items.
So we have to change our zoning code, and that'll be on the planning commission meeting coming up in, uh, November, I believe.
Okay. I, I guess I'm just still against the, the whole project in general, so I'm gonna vote nay on this one, just because that's where I stand with it, but.
And I, I, I kind of share your irritation with that fact, because we, when we voted on this, one of the reasons that I approved it was because it was park dedication money, and we were under the impression that we could only use it for brand-new park amenities, and.
And I fought that at the time, too, and I.
Right, but that's what, I mean, for years, that's what we've been under the impression was the case. I mean, it wasn't like it was a new thing, but, um, but with that, that, um, coming to light here recently, you know, I was trying to ask myself, would that change the way that I voted? And if all things were equal at the time, I would've said no, because I wanna use it for those, that money for maintenance, not for brand-new items, right? But, um, but also, there've been a lot of things that have changed since that time as well, and that we've got new apartment complexes coming in, where we've got, you know, potentially upwards of like six hundred some thousand dollars, it's gonna be in that park dedication fund. That's an awful lot of money for maintenance, you know, so. At the time when we were discussing it, we only had two hundred-ish something?
Two eighteen, I think it was.
Two eighteen was, half of it was gonna come from that, yeah. So, so I mean, a lot of things have changed since then, so I mean, that's, that, but I, I share that frustration, that because at the time, we made the decision, we might not have made that same decision, but also with those other changes, and you say, "Well, boy, we got an awful lot of money here that should go to something." I mean, we're still gonna have money left over for maintenance, even with doing this, so. Um, and we're not taking any money out of the general fund to, to do this project, which was my big, big problem with it from the very beginning, was that I do not wanna spend tax, our local tax dollars on something like this. If we got a grant, fine. If we got park dedication funds that are earmarked for this purpose, fine, but not tax dollars, so. Uh, so that's why I've still, I still think it's a fair, uh, thing to spend the money on, and a good, a good idea to do it, so, given the circumstances, but. Uh, any other comments at all on, on the bathroom, uh, bid?
And was that with, that was with the floating slab option, instead of the four-foot foundation, that we had talked about maybe two or three months ago? I believe that's what it was.
I believe we did it to the lowest specifications as required.
Jason, do you remember, was that, was that okay with frost and with plumbing in the, in the slab and everything? I know they've done it like that for years, but.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't involved in anything with the, with the restroom.
Okay.
Um, stuff, but I'm pretty sure I saw the plans didn't have deep footings on them, so.
Yeah, it was like slab on grade.
We did the bare minimum as required by the building official.
Okay. And you don't know the, I guess you don't know how much savings that would be, versus doing a standard four-foot footing?
We didn't get the pricing of that.
Okay. Would it be possible to do an alternate one for a standard footing and one for the floating slab type?
The, what they're gonna do for the, it's not just slab, they actually do curb, curbing underneath it, so it's all one pore.
Oh, right, right, so.
It's like the foundation, but it's all one pore. So it's not like, you know, four inches or whatever.
Right, right, yeah.
Flat alloy curbs, like that, top and bottom.
Yeah, it's thickened edges.
It's actually goes down like this, like a reverse curbing.
Yep, so we had talked about.
It's taking a place of a lot of the foundation stuff, because it's cheaper, and it's just structurally just as good.
Okay.
A lot of people are going that route.
Uh, yep, yep. I know Steve just had some concern about the floating slab with the thickened edges like that, maybe moving with plumbing in it. I'd, I'd, it'd be kind of nice to know if we could get an alternate bid for, with a standard four-foot footing and versus with the floating. Is that something that would be possible with this bid request?
Um, we can add this to the resolution to make the adjustment.
Just so, I mean, if it's only a couple thousand dollars difference to have a four-foot, uh, ice block versus the eighteen inch or whatever was specified, I mean, it would kinda be a no-brainer.
I know Councilman Lundin did review the specifications prior to us, due to his, um, possible donation that he was requesting. Um, so he was okay with the way the specifications were drawn up. Um, and it would delay this, because we'd have to get more plans drawn, um, and we're really running out of time.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? Otherwise, do we have a motion? Well, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, advertisement for bids.
Second.
And I have a second from Dan, or excuse me, a second from Councilman Collison. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one. Uh, moving on to K six, resolution awarding the bid for the Bluebird Park Splash Pad Utility Improvements Project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, so this was the utility plans that we went out for bids for. Um, we did receive bids on September twenty-seventh. Uh, we got nine bidders. Um, and the bids ranged from four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, the engineer's estimate was at two hundred and ten thousand, five sixty, so the little bidder, uh, DW Companies at two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five was pretty, pretty darn close, but, uh, um, I guess with that many bidders and with that kind of range, you know, we're recommending to proceed with, with DW Companies' bid there and, and keep it rolling, but I guess this is, you know, same topic, is going out for bids on the restroom, so.
I'll make that motion to go with the DW.
So in, in the budgeting for this, we use the engineer's estimate, I assume? So we're already three thousand and fifteen dollars over budget on this first step, if we choose this bid?
Uh, I guess to be honest, um, no, we're, we're more than that. I, I think this pro, this bid that we went out for was pieces from the different budgeted windows. So twenty-five thousand was for the storm sewer that came from the splash pad, you know, grant number, and fifty thousand was for the, the sewer, and, you know, so we had to grab different pieces from that grant. And I would say those came together probably at about two hundred thousand, from what that grant was for. So, so we're probably more on that, I mean, to be honest, that thirteen thousand, um, you know, above what the grant was written for. But with the, you know, the other cost savings, hopefully this restroom coming in under, you know, we're kind of on track where we're hoping to still come out on, on budget. This is just the first piece.
And, and staff did discuss about some of the, the items that were laid out within the bid, um, possible things that could be taken out to make up for that difference. Um, and so there are other ways that we can make a cost savings to still come in within our budget.
So we can't delay this step until we, to wait for the, what, for the bathroom stuff to come in? I mean, what if, this is, like you said, this is already thirteen thousand, what if the bathroom comes in fifty thousand over budget? Now we're, and have an extra sixty-three thousand dollars over what we started at. Is there any way we can wait? I mean, I, I don't know if we're really time-crunched, or.
We are very time-crunched, actually. Um, at this point, um, our project needs to be in the ground and basically completed by July of next year, to have a complete closeout by December of next year. So, um, we're getting close to the, to the finish line here, um, and it is, after our conversation today, a pretty strong, I have a strong, um, feeling that we'll be able to come still within our budget that we've set for this project, um, looking at some of the extras that have been added in as part of these quotes.
Okay, and if we, say if we, just devil's advocate, if we come over fifty thousand dollars over budget on the bathroom, can we stop this work, or has it already been done by the time we get the quotes back for the bathroom? I don't want, I just don't wanna see us go, get in the hole and not be able to dig ourselves back out of it.
It really depends on what the timeline is for this contractor, but we can always have the conversation with them that we would like them to wait until we get the quotes back from the bathroom.
Yeah, I just, I just don't.
Making that more timely.
Don't wanna spend money and then have to be forced to spend more money because we rushed it.
And even if we are over budget, there's money in the park dedication fund that would cover that, so it's still coming from the same source. It's not coming from tax dollars, so.
Yeah, but still tax dollars, every dollar, and there's taxes at some point or another.
Uh, park dedication fees.
Yeah, well, it's still.
It's not taxes.
But it's still, if you're paying for maintenance.
It's not really true, because we still can't spend it on roads or bridges or.
Right.
Stoplights, or we, we can only spend it still on either parks or park maintenance, essentially.
But we spend park.
Park improvements.
Park improvements.
We spend park maintenance now out of taxes, though, so if you're taking from the, where does the park maintenance, uh, funding come from?
Well, you may be all right, I guess, I, I should.
So maintenance, like if we are doing, like replacing slides and stuff in Fund nine twenty, so capital improvement.
And that comes from the tax levy?
We do have some in actual parks, um, general fund, which is four hundred for grounds. Um, we also have four oh four for repair replacements, so if a slide is cracked, if the bubble is cracked, replacing those, those come out of the general fund.
So if we don't spend that park, park dedication funds, we could spend it on that stuff and not spend it out of the taxes?
Cannot spend it on the things I just mentioned. So replacement, for example, Clifford Park, um, or Clifford Apparatus at Bluebird Park, if that becomes, let's just say decrepit or too old to be able to be marked as safe as equipment, and we wanna take that entire facility, that, that structure down, we could use park dedication funds to put a new structure in its place. Now, if the slides broke on it, and we're like, "Well, let's just leave the metal there and we'll just replace the slides," no, you cannot use park dedication for that.
What if you upgraded it to a bigger slide or a wider slide? Wouldn't that be, I mean, that's, I just, every dollar we spend is taxpayer money at the end of the day.
No, it's not.
Okay, it affects the taxpayer money then at the end of the day.
Not while we're restricted by what the state will allow us to use that specific money for.
But at the last meeting, we said that we weren't restricted as far as, as much as we thought.
Not as much as we thought, but we're still not, and when I said maintenance, that's not probably realistic, I mean, it's.
Not maintenance, it's capital replacement.
Improvements, park improvements, which, yeah, I'm thinking the same way that you are, is that, okay, well, we can, if something is old and decrepit, we can pull it out and put something new in. Well, that's an improvement. It's not fixing it, but it's improving it, so we still can't use it for just regular old maintenance on stuff. So we're still limited on what we can do with it. It's not like we can just take that money and say, "Okay." You know, and I would assume that the maintenance budget for the parks is not a ton, right? I mean, you're talking, I don't have a number.
Roughly around six thousand dollars, I believe, each year.
Six grand, so, I mean, we're not talking a ton of money. So, uh, so anyway, I mean, that's.
I just don't wanna see us get in the hole and.
I get what you're saying. I mean, in, in, in principle, I agree with you a hundred percent, I'm just, in how you're applying the logic, I disagree.
One thing, Mayor and Council, I will add is, I think with the direction, and sometimes it's, when we, it's voted upon and passes, whether it's all or even just the majority, we've gone now in, down this realm, and if we were to determine that we wanted to stop, we are not receiving any of those DNR grant funds, and what we've spent thus far, far, will be all city money. So I do think that the time has passed for us to go backwards, because of the amount of money that we've invested, given the, the direction of council as a majority vote.
I just wanna make sure it doesn't happen again, I guess. I, I was really frustrated listening to the last meeting, because I'd, I'd asked so many times about the park dedication funds, because there are ways to, to use it, like what you guys said in the last meeting. And it's, like you said, right now, we're too late in the game to do much about it, but it's, it's kinda frustrating as a council member, because that kind of reflects poorly on us, um, that we didn't have all the information to make this sort of decision. And I think there's gonna be a lot of people in this town that are upset about the splash pad. Um, they're not gonna see that we got DNR grants or how we, how we spent the money. They're just gonna see the city spent money to build an amenity that they don't think that we need, so. And I think, I mean, years down the road, a year or two, and we have an economic recession, and they're gonna see that, it's just gonna really irritate people, so. Me, I, I think personally, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote nay on this again, too, just because I think it just, just looks bad.
I, I agree with you on many, many aspects of this whole, whole splash pad thing. But I, I'm more concerned about the water usage, anything that, that, that should've been dealt with a little bit better, I believe.
Yep.
Um, but at this point, we can't really kibosh it, because we're gonna be into it for more money, the city. Actually, there is no city tax money going into it, but, but there would be, if, if we put a kibosh to this thing right now. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I would say too, on the water usage, we're not charging anybody for water, we're not charging ourselves for water. It's only the wear and tear on the equipment that we're, which, I mean, yeah, you can say, "Oh, yeah, well, that costs us." But it's not like we're paying money out for water or anything like that, so we're already producing the water.
Implicitly, you are.
But we're already looking at upgrading our water supply system.
Even implicitly, Luke, even if you wanna talk about what does it cost the city to bring a gallon of water to your, to your door? I mean, do we, do we, anybody have an idea on what that cost is? I mean, it's not very much, I mean. And I mean, what you, what you charge for it is obviously more than what it costs you to produce it, so.
I wanna say it's nine tenths of a penny.
For a gallon, okay, so. So I mean, we're not, and that's still, even that, even that number is.
For what we pay for the DNR water appropriation permit, um, it's less than that.
Yeah, so I mean, this, the cost and even the wear and tear, I mean, over the grand scheme of things, is just, it's piddly, and it's really nothing to be concerned about, and, you know, we had, I had conversations with the DNR myself about that two hundred and seventy million gallon limit. I mean, they're concerned about that, as long as we're being proactive on making sure that we're careful with water usage. But I mean, it's not something that they're gonna say, "Okay, you're at two seventy, you know, we're pulling the plug on you." It's not how that works. I mean, they, they just wanna see that we're making an effort, and there's no fines or anything like that if we go over. I mean, that was a big thing that we thought, you know, when we had voted on that earlier this summer, about, uh, even in odd days, was, you know, that we were concerned about two hundred and seventy million gallons. Well, that concern really wasn't warranted after we had the meeting and talked with, with the DNR some more, so. Um, but, and I think as far as your comment is, that people are gonna be upset about this, from all of my experience going out and door knocking, I'd say it was fifty-fifty on the, on the splash pad. And I think the other fifty, if you told them how we're funding this, they would say, "Oh, that's, that's, it makes a lot of sense." You know, so I, that's where I come down on it. I mean, yeah, maybe there'd be a few stragglers in there that would be upset still about it, but, um, but I think you, the vast majority of people, if they, if they were sitting in this seat, and they'd, they'd say, "Okay, well, yeah, we're not using tax dollars for it, local tax dollars," and I think it makes sense how we're doing it, so.
So you, you brought up the fifty percent would say yea and nay. I had a question.
At that time, but I mean, I think given the circumstances, that we've, we've changed a lot of the way that we were going about doing this since that time. At that time, we were using two hundred and eighteen thousand in taxpayer dollars, and I said, "No, no way."
So I had a question earlier, and I forgot to ask it about, um, the special election stuff. So, um, if you think about like school boards and stuff like that, they always have, like, would you be willing to spend this amount of money to have this amenity? Or can we add something like that? So if we have, say, another big development in the future, we can actually get a statistical number to use, like, say, would you want a splash pad? And if we get a thirty percent yes, seventy percent no, we can use that to make decisions. Can we do that in an election in the future? If we have something upcoming that we wanna do, that's, I mean, we don't really have any. That's, I mean, we don't really have any sort of statistical data, other than what we think.
We aren't allowed to do referendums on something unless it would increase taxes.
The tax levy directly.
If your tax rate would go up, then you're allowed to do a referendum on that decision, but if you, if you're trying to get something done and not raise the tax rate, then you can't do the referendum, which is, which is, and that's another state...
And it has come up, it's come up with the amphitheater, um, by council, it's also come up with the splash pad even years back, when it was being discussed, about putting in that question on the ballot, but it does, doesn't fit. Asking, um, for a question to give opinion on what do you think we should do, is not permitted by state statute.
I just think there'd be a way around, like, if the way you worded it, we could actually get some usable data, I, I just don't like seeing...
You'd only be able to word it if you said, if your taxes were to increase by X amount of percentage, would you be in favor, yes or no?
Correct.
Then you could.
That, yeah, that's what, that's what I mean.
But you have to tie it with that, that you're anticipating to do that project.
Yes, okay.
Using a hundred percent of that...
Okay.
Tax, the levy, basically.
Okay, I would just like to get more information, because I think the, I think there's more people that are against it than, in my experience, and it'd be nice to have actual concrete numbers, so we're not up here arguing about fifty percent, fifty percent. I, that's, that was just something I had earlier that I forgot to ask. So are there any big projects that are upcoming at all, that might have some sort of implications with doing something like that?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Um, I would like to mention that, um, when you do speak of residents being aware of where the funding comes from, we are required to put that this project was funded by the Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant, um, permanently at the site, and when we get our final documents, we will have a sign at the site outlining our donors, um, that we've received so far, and if you would like, I could include paid for by park dedication funds, so that residents are aware of where the funding is coming from.
Yeah, I would, I would like that, if, I...
I was going to suggest it.
Yeah.
I'd like a really good explanation of how the funds work and...
Not just paid for by the DNR, cause people are gonna see that and think, oh, that we didn't even pay for this, because we still did, in a sense.
That, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
More towards when the project starts.
Yeah, and then it'll be up for the entirety of the project, is what the plan is.
All right. So do, Dan, did you make a motion already for going with DW on this?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion from, uh, Councilman, uh, Collison to go with the lowest bidder.
I'll second.
And I have a second from Councilman Heeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one. All right, uh, moving on to the consent agenda, I just wanted to thank several people here for, uh, some of their donations that they've made to, um, to illuminate Isani here, it looks like, so, uh, DW Companies did some dirt work for us, uh, a value of like eleven thousand, which is awesome, and they're, they're comping that in exchange for some advertising that we're, we're giving them, so we appreciate that. Uh, LJ Level, uh, P and M Trusts, and, uh, somebody's gonna have to help me say that, but...
Keepers.
Keepers, okay, uh, they all pitched in to, uh, help with the high school build some, uh, sheds and some, maybe shed isn't the right word, but...
Yeah, vendor sheds.
Vendor shed, okay, sure, uh, so that was awfully nice of them to do, and, and appreciate the high school, working with them to, to make that happen, so...
And I wanted to commend the staff for doing a good job reaching out and getting those donations. Um, I'm, I'm happy to see that we're able to sort of make illuminate work and not spend any taxpayer money. I think if we keep doing this every year, it'll just gain momentum, and we can do it at a, not to a cost to the residents, which is a huge deal for me. So, good job, staff.
Yeah, they've done...
I'd like to see that Courtney will be leaving the liquor store, she's always, uh, uh, friendly and smiling all the time, and she's a great employee for the liquor store.
She's been there a long time, too, hasn't she, yeah?
Anything else on the consent agenda for...
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill, and a second from Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero. Any other discussion?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Merrill, and a second from Councilman Collison for the last time, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero, we are adjourned.